Did you hear that we were kidnapping at my school today? That was what I was looking for. Maybe that's bad. You know what's weird? Ten plus ten and eleven plus eleven are the same thing. Oh. Definitely, yeah. And eleven plus eleven is twenty-two.
Um, move forward and do some work, and I wasn't sure the answer to that. You know, so I made, you know, further committees or further changes to just do three main committees and then have ad hoc committees. To try that out, to see where do we need the ad hoc committees to maybe see if that can help us zero in on what committees we really need as it were. And so, I wanted to try it out for a year, we have. And the question I have for you now, first of all, the policy. What should the policy look like?
Thank you. Do we want to, I mean currently there are specific committees listed within the policy. Not the committees that we have now, not the committees we had two years ago either. Um, but there are the specific committees listed in there. So, first question is, should we rewrite our policy to match what we're doing now? Or should we rewrite it to be more broad and flexible so that committees can change over time? And so that's question number one, and then, and then my next question is, do we have the committees that we need now and do ad hoc hot committees work? So, let's go with the first question, what should we do with the policy? I am leaning towards rewriting it so that it is broad enough that committees can change. Where I would lean.
According to our needs.
I would write a philosophy of committee statement. And then say, here are some suggestions. And allow the current board at the time to choose the committees that work for them. We do have other policies that call for executive committee. So, we may want to consider writing that one in the policy.
Makes sense with our other policies that, you know, outline the president and two vice presidents, it makes sense. Um, is everyone else agree with that, making it a philosophy of committees and then having some suggested committees? But providing flexibility as needed? What are the, I mean, are there some committees that we should always have? Or what would you say the suggested committees are?
Suggested for me would be finance facilities. Executive.
And then others as needed? Okay, and it's really, it's interesting too, it's, I mean even the name GP one-fourteenth is Board Affiliated Committees. And the first sentence is a board affiliated committee is composed of non-board members. And includes one or more board members participating. Read that and went huh? Cause we have, we have some of those.
Those are administrative committees.
Yes, yes. And so I think maybe we define what our board advisory committees and what our administrative committees
And perhaps change-
That a board member is, represents us on, and what are the community committees? Cause we have things like Western Growth and Salt Lake County that are nothing, that are not the district's communities, but the board members sit on. So, we could define the three types of committees.
And maybe change the title.
Yes. Hey, I am going to attempt a draft of this. And we'll bring it forward in the future. I mean, I also put, so I also on board docs put GP one thirteen on there also, just to look over, cause we do have that policy, which is board committee principles. And as I read over that, it, I think it's, I think it's pretty good. I think it does a good job. And outlining what a board committee should do. Um, but it's, you know, one thirteen and one fourteen need to line up better and possibly reference each other also. Okay, the next question is, do we have, currently have the committees that we need? And are ad hoc committees working, or should they be more permanent?
Forgive me if I state something that is incorrect, but I have a hard time seeing the AC as a committee. And I think the reason why I have a hard time seeing it as a committee is because we rotate out.
So, I don't know.
I, I'm not saying that any, I, I'm just placing my opinion on that.
I have, I've been, I have been a little worried about the act too, wondering if we lose some of our effectiveness if we're always rotating.
You know, it's not the only committee that I've wondered if there would be value in having, like, one or two anchor people and others rotating. Like, adding an anchor to LEAC. Because I do see the value of, of being able to experience it. But for the sake of continuity, it would be nice to have.
Yeah, and I, I agree on LEAC, there's great value for all board members to participate in that.
And not only is it value for board members though, but it's in, it's value for employees get, to get to know us as board members.
Are there any other committees you're thinking of that may need an anchor?
Well, I think that there's- I'm thinking of our opposite, where it's like, sometimes I think, wow, it would be valuable for me to sit in on a finance committee meeting. Just, and that may be my inexperience speaking, but I don't mean always, but-
We've actually discussed that Nikki, and thought about, you know, having one of us sta- step out, step aside, and have you come every so often.
That's nice of you to consider me, and it's-
Absolutely. No, no, I think it's really necessary.
And it's also something we've-
Very wise, yeah.
We consider when making board assignments, every two years also, is to making sure, we want every board member, I think every board member in their four-year term needs a chance to serve on finance and facilities. They should experience both. Definitely make sure a more well-rounded and knowledgeable board member.
But like the, the advisory committee is another one that I would sure love to visit once in a while.
I'm wondering if we need three people on that one.
On the GF?
On the, yeah.
And what's your thought on that, why?
Question is, I think board meetings, we're, we're running the agenda, we're kind of, it's our deal. And I think that that committee has evolved enough to be their own with board participation, not a board meeting, a board directive. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I, I think whenever we put three people on a board, that, that's a board. A board committee.
Yeah, that the board created and they advised the board, and that-
That's my question, is this a board, it, it started as a board committee, but is it now more of an administrative committee that they run their own and i- it's a tough one to decide. Have everyone step away, cause I want to be still very involved. But at the same time, I don't, they're running the agenda, we're not.
I do, I do see the value, I personally feel like I'm of value to that committee. And I know-
So, I'm wondering if we have one or two board members permanently and then others can rotate through it.
I think that needs to be communicated with the leadership on that committee though. And I think that communication has started, but, um, with that committee, it has to be a lot of established trust. So, that's that can make it difficult in some situations.
To rotate board members through.
Yeah, I do like the idea of rotating board members through. I didn't see that part of it until it was brought to my attention. And it made perfect sense.
About the trust?
Good either way, and I missed a lot because of my, my work schedule. My work schedule is free now, I can kind of attend anything, so. I'm, I'm good either way. If keeping it as a board committee, I just question again, just, has it evolved? You know, should we, should we redefine what it is, but
Well, if you look at the attachment on board docs of our current committee assignments, we do have it broken out into board advisory committee and board slash district created committee. And then um, organizations with board representation, so we have three different layers there, and GEAC is under a board slash district created committee. Along with district wellness and district health curriculum materials review committee and safety. So, you're right, it's not a board committee.
Um, maybe one thing that I would change here is, um, the district health curriculum materials review committee, that's the same as district wellness committee. It's not two separate committees. So, I would go with the second description of the district health curriculum material review committee. Because that's really what we do do, is we evaluate any changes that have come from the state. And then we evaluate, um, maturation, health, curriculum.
Thoughts on ad hoc committees? We've had one for Fridays. We had one for the bond. We had one for controversial issues, and we have a school safety one.
Very beneficial. I think it's helped the board and it's helped the work that has needed to be done. I don't see anything wrong with having them.
So, keep something in policy for ad hoc committees and keep using them as needed.
We'll not always have somebody on the board of trustees. In fact, we won't always have somebody with Utah high schools, you have to be elected.
You're on our board, you'll be elected.
Yeah, maybe.
So, we may not always have board representation on it.
Correct. When the legislature, you know, cut the number. There's only one representative from six A, and there are four six A regions. So, there would be one superintendent and one board member, so.
Gosh, I'll have to run again. Okay, any other suggestions?
Probably the only one, but I want a innovation committee. I might be the only one.
It's bound on what their purpose would be, cause when you say, I mean, to me, like an innovation committee, it's like having an education committee. It's like everything we do, so I just, I have a hard time knowing what their specific focus is. I see a lot of our ad hoc committees actually being-
I was gonna say, do you see that as some of our ad hoc committees?
Yeah, the problem with the ad hoc committee is it's organized for a certain purpose and it I'm looking at, I really like the long-term. We're sending a message, we want to be very innovative. We have some innovative opportunities that will be coming to the district really, really soon. And I would like the board to have, be a part of those discussions. And so, when we create it, um, when we create an ad hoc committee, I think that they, they tend to go away. So, I would like something, then they're more permanent to help the board have input on, you know, our direction in terms of creating innovative opportunities in our schools.
Give an example of an innovative opportunity coming up that we would want the committee to?
Well, like for instance, we've talked about this Utah State University that's gonna be created out in Harriman, maybe somewhere ounce or whatever, cause there's opportunities for that committee to give some input on that.
Which they did at one point in time.
That's gonna be sooner rather than later, opportunities are gonna come in, in that area. You know, again, we, we have some schools that have some space. We've talked about different things. You know, we talked about in that committee, we had searched, um, different districts, this is right when it was ended. We had searched different districts across the nation and, and, and looked at different programs, and we've never been able to bring that information to the board, it's just, it's and I just think the board ought to be involved in those decisions at a high level, not just administration, so, that's just me, but
And I agree with that premise, that the board should be involved in that. Just not sure if it should be a standing committee, or if it should be created to explore one innovative idea at a time.
The question really becomes, um, the permanency of it.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's the question in my mind.
You want to create it for one event, then we don't have an overall say in the direction of where we go on everything. Cause they're gonna do the Utah State thing, that's it. They're not looking at how to expand That's just one of the areas that I am big on, and I thought we did some great things while we had it for two years and, you know. But that's just, that's just me.
Board members thoughts on that?
I like the idea. I do worry that when it's the same people, it might stagnate, you know? Are you still super innovative if it's always the same group? Every two years?
What concerned me was the conflict between a board innovative committee and the district innovative team. And I felt like that was an odd pairing.
Yeah.
I know the district has an innovative team, its job is to look into those types of things.
We're, we don't have no representation, so we have no input. So, if they want to keep their administrative committee on innovations and invite one of us to it, that would serve purposes too.
Okay, any other suggestions? Um, one idea that has crossed my mind is having a policy committee. We used to, we have a schedule, we have a policy that says we have a schedule, and every month we review a couple of our policies.
Kinda do, but
And we've-
It's not on the schedule though.
Yes, and we, we always struggled doing that, cause we'd run out of time on our agenda. Really ran out of time on our agenda. Um, and this year we've been solely bringing back, we've revised several of our board policies, so we're kind of working through it. At a slow pace. So, any thoughts on that? She's out, she's out the door. Okay, well, this is, this is a good start. Good feedback, consider it, we'll bring a draft. Um, and I welcome if, if you have additional thoughts and want to call or email me, please do, we welcome that. All right. Uh, next is report on communications implementation, Dr. Godfrey.
My update I referenced earlier, and that's the newsletter. There's a cost associated with purchasing email addresses. I don't know if that's something I guess I can share it here.
Email addresses, people that aren't, don't have kids in the district?
In the same way that we can pay a company to send postcards to every address in the district, even though we don't have all those residential addresses in our system, we can also pay a company to give us the email addresses and to send things out to all email addresses. Excuse me. Uh, it enters into five figures to get all of those email addresses, to have things sent out. But, that's how you get those messages out to everyone. Now, that's not every time you do it, that's to get the initial-
How long is that figure for though?
Um, I'd have to, I'd have to look, let me see if I can pull that up.
Cause you would think that they would have to be updated by people that are moving in and out of the district. But I don't think they would be removing anybody out of this, but possibly adding people to the list.
So, I hate it when people solicit me electronically without asking me first. I know that, when I, during my election, I thought of doing that myself. And just to see people's kind of anger, they just seem to be a little less angry by getting a postcard in the mail that they probably discard. But the cost seems to be more reasonable, or putting an ad in the, the journals I think would be a lot more inexpensive, and just really, just word of mouth, like, hey, share this with your neighbor, you know? I, I know that we won't get everyone that way, but, um, I don't know, I, it's just gonna hit their spam and they're just gonna disregard it. It's best, the best way is get people in the neighborhood to share it with people that, you know, don't have kids in, in our schools. But, that's a hard gift.
I like the idea of journals, just because people who take the time to read a journal are probably the people who would care about-
Who would read a newsletter too.
A- and they're probably the ones that don't have kids as much in school.
Yeah.
That would read a journal. They have time.
They're senior citizens.
Cause they have time to read it.
So, we set up something where they can opt into it?
That's what I think, is it should be very simple, it could put, put one of those QR codes, you know, also a neat, uh, an address, they can just go put their information and opt into it. And a postcard, put it in the journals, put it-
QR code or an email request email to be put on the list, or?
Or PTAs to, to share it and, you know, and-
Really honest, senior citizens don't know how to use a QR code very well.
Right.
Hey, I am, I'm almost a senior citizen and I do know how.
Well, you're not, you're a different kind of senior citizen.
I had not really considered that until recently, and I was set straight by-
Oh, it's true.
I've been, I've been getting the senior discount at Taco Bell in the drive-thru, and I know how to use a QR code. I, he- here's, here's really the issue, here's the, and, and Mr. Robinson referenced this. How eager are we to get our message to everyone? Because if you send the- If, if, if you send the email to everyone, but it's five figures, not every time, that's to get the initial, that's to get that set up, that's not an ongoing cost. But, if you say a QR code or we'll send you an email and you can sign up, or if you send a postcard, it's just, there, there are people you don't reach as a result of that.
It would with the journal.
Yeah, with a journal, they have time to sit-
Would the postcard go to every house?
I actually think that-
Yes, we've done a number of postcards that way that go to every home. And focus groups suggest that those don't, you know, if we really want to reach everyone, we would send an email, we would send a postcard, and
Have it on their five o'clock news.
And we would have it in the, in the journals. Now, the journals are rela-
What would be the cost for all of those things, would it be equivalent to the five figures?
Yeah, it would be, um, we've got the five figures for the email. And then close to that for a postcard, district-wide. And then you have, you know, the city journals are the least expensive way of doing it, so it's just a question of how broad do we want to go?
How, how does this company like, know what our emails are, cause like, people are constantly moving in and out and like
How would they know that I live in Harriman?
I have given yours out.
Yeah.
How do they know I was talking about needing a towel rack, and all of a sudden, Amazon ads are embedded into every webpage I'm on, so I, it, by the way, Amazon, I don't need a towel rack. But the, the-
And, and by the way, for very inexpensive, you can purchase ad space in like the, um, Electronic Desert News and Tribune, and they can target it just to our district.
Yeah, we, we can do any number of things, but we talked about a quarterly email, and so that's why I wanted to bring that back to you.
How far, how far into five figures without?
Just into five figures. I can do any combination of those that you'd like.
Or some targeted, or boosting some so- social media posts. So that more people are seeing it and giving the opportunity to sign up their email address. So that more people are seeing it and giving the opportunity to sign up their email address.
Pass it out.
I have. I think that people still do follow it because it's the community that they're a part of and they're taxpayers in that community.
I'm gonna follow it really close when I have kids in there, so. Yeah, well, I like, I like to know what's happening in our school.
What it costs to do a value coupon? You know, those little envelopes you get? Value coupon?
I like what Nikki said, I think we start with some low cost issues, let's see if people read it, let's see what their input from it is and, and.
Yeah, so will we send it to every email address that we have in the district? And we're talking about ways to get more email addresses, right?
Send it to the ones that we have. A lot.
One ad in the journal. A spot on our district website to sign up, some social media boosting, what were the other?
Can we put information on our marquees?
Well, that's a good idea.
I mean, that's kind of a lot to follow when you're driving past.
I think though, an article in the newsletter saying we would like this to reach people that don't have kids in school might be appropriate, and just letting them know like, we're creating this for the whole community and not just for our schools. Cause I think we do a really good job at telling people who are attending a certain school what's going on in that school, we do a really good job with that. It's, it's letting everyone know, you know, who aren't in that school.
As I recall, the journal is about eight hundred dollars for a full page, is it, or a half page?
Now, I, I'm also giving you round high figures because you can also target and say voters in Jordan School District. And so, we're gonna do voters. And we're gonna, so you can target various groups, you can bring that email cost down. And I, I don't. It's a question of cost, but it's also a question of how much do we want that message out there? E- e- every, every different method that you use reaches somebody else.
So, the question is, do we want to go for everything and pay for the email list, send a postcard, do social media? Um, or do we want to, it sounds like most people are saying start with some of the lesser expensive
And also contact.
Ways.
Those are the ones we really want because, you know, people who would, people who are involved in the politics of it all are people who are very. I would start, I would start smaller and see how it goes. Financially wise, I would get the low hanging fruit first.
The, the, the cheapest is the city journals, and we get a pretty good bang for our buck out of that. And a lot of the stories are about the district and sports and activities also.
Why don't we go with our emails, maybe get the PTA looking at it and the journals and just kinda revisit it in three to six months after a couple of.
I was gonna say, and some social media push out too.
Ask our schools to put it on their school newsletter if they have, I know that my schools have a, yeah.
Probably just, yeah, it's just going to pair.
True.
Ask them, like, share this with people that don't have kids.
I don't hate the marquee idea.
The only thing that worries me about the marquee idea is a lot of information, you would have to sit there for a few, you know, a little bit of time to watch it all. Longer than a stop sign.
I read them all.
Well, just, maybe you don't give an exhaustive amount of information, just say, sign up for our newsletter on the Jordan website or something like that. I don't know. I don't know if Canyon tells what their lunch choices are, and I'm telling you I have them memorized, just so you know.
Drive by, stop it.
So you could say, what's happening in our district, go to jordandistrict.org and then write up prominent on our main pages, here's where you can go to sign up for our newsletter. And then, you can get that and a stop sign.
Okay, so do you have enough direction?
No. And let me actually give you an updated number.
Okay.
The five figure I gave you would be postcards and email to everyone, not just the email. So, and that's just into, that's probably twelve thousand total. We have ninety thousand households in our district. So, if you really want the word out, that's one way to do it. Now, there are lots of other ways to put it around there, but if you really wanted to do that and you threw in some ads in the city journals, then you could say, I got an email and a mailer and in city journal, all saying the same thing, and that would be about thirteen thousand dollars, now it's coming from every direction. And I could, and, and then we do social media, of course, and we can do marquees and other things, then the message is really out there. That's the max plan. And then you can scale back from that and say, let's do journals, social media, and send it to everyone whose email we already have. And I, I, I guess I do have clarity that maybe that's our first step, but that's what and we can continue to do that.
Of the ninety thousand households, how many of those households have children in our schools? Do, would you have a guess at all?
I don't know off the top of my head, we have fifty-six thousand, fifty-eight thousand students, fifty-eight thousand and.
Two or three come.
Two or three from the household sometimes, so.
Less than half.
Or ten.
Times ten.
So, it's hard, y- you, you don't reach ninety thousand people without doing it in multiple ways. And when we did advertising for our virtual schools and for Majestic and for the IB program, we had the postcard come out at the same time that the ads came out in the city journals. We did emails only for those emails that we already had. So, it, that's just the range, what you can do, so whatever you'd like us to do, we're always gonna do social media as part of that.
So, it sounds like journals.
Journals.
Start with journals, do you wanna add anything else?
I think I would start with everything but the emails and see where we're at. Yeah, postcard, journals, social media.
My preference too, I just, just kinda, I don't like the email, cause unsolicited email.
Then we would know how many.
Deleted.
Kids we're getting, right?
Electronically, you can si- check and see how many people are viewing this, right?
Yes, the, are you talking about sending a postcard saying, access our, our newsletter here?
Well, I, I was thinking the postcard would say, do, if you want to sign up to receive our quarterly email. Send an email address or go here or whatever, so they can not. So the postcard tells them that, lets them sign up, or encourages them to sign up to get it every quarter, so we don't send the postcard every time there's a newsletter.
Okay, so a signup postcard, emails, and social media, and the journals, is that right?
Emails are the ones that we have, right?
But not the separate, not the outside, eh, but that's Jen and I on postcards, anyone else think we should do postcards?
Yeah, I like it.
I'm okay with it.
I'm not opposed to it. What's your reasoning for no Bryce? Not to put you on the spot?
I just wanna hear your opinion on it.
What I would prefer is not to spend any money, to send out emails for a signup to those who we know, and let's see what the response is. If we get five percent responding, then I think it's pretty safe to say that the community is content with what's going on and doesn't feel like they need to be informed. If we get fifty percent, so I would rather just send out an email with a s- option to sign up and see what that response rate is. If there's a tremendous response rate from that, then I'd be more inclined to spend some money to reach those who don't have students. But I'd like to know if there's even an interest.
I feel like we have things for people who have students in the district, you know, you, I feel like the district does a pretty good job of getting their news out. What I worry is sitting in those, um, focus groups, listening in to, the thing I was most alarmed by was the people who don't have kids in the district, but they're paying their taxes. And that's the group that I feel like is not as informed.
And they have a lot of inaccuracies.
Yes.
Well, and that's what I wanted is to use this to change some of the misperceptions out there, so not just report what we're doing great, but help change some perceptions that we have out.
And I will say, expense wise, we used to send out a mailer twice a year to every house in the district. Was it quarterly, was it quarterly? Quarterly, we mailed every house in the district our newsletter. But got lots of feedback that it wasn't seen.
See, now, I don't think this is gonna change those perceptions. I just wanna change perceptions, I don't care how we do it.
Bryce, what if we, what if we did the emails that we have and the journal?
I would support that, but I would, my vote would not be to, my vote would be to do this in a multi-wave form. And wave number one wouldn't, my wave number one wouldn't cost any money. If you choose to do, if you vote for a, a mailer or a journal, I, I'm fine with that, I'm not gonna oppose that.
Okay, so, everyone in favor of, so just, let's just start and then I'll add things to it, everyone's good with. And when we're talking about email, are we sending an email to sign up for a quarter, do we send the quarterly newsletter and then also say, do you wanna sign up for future ones, go here?
That's what I think.
Is that what you're thinking?
Here's what we'd like to send you, if you'd like to sign up for more, please go here.
Okay, everyone's good with that. Journals. Raise your hand if you want it in the journal.
Yeah, I think you're gonna reach seniors there.
That, and that's where I think we need to reach.
Um, postcard.
What's the cost of a postcard?
Six thousand.
Hard for me would be second step, after the first step.
So you're saying let's try these two first, okay.
And social media.
Okay, so, emails within the district, journals, social media pushes where we're sto- where we will start. Okay. Yes, so the newsletter's been emailed to us.
Yes, it has. Looks good.
I have a question.
Yes.
Not a judgment, a true question. So when, for example, when we were getting a lot of community feedback about second steps and some concerns with external links, and the district did something about it, I felt like there was some hesitation to publicize that we did something about it. I'm curious what the logic was there? Or did I misread the situation?
Um, I don't think there was hesitation to talk publicly about it. I, I did speak publicly about it in our last meeting.
But kind of, I mean, we asked for that, I just, I'm curi- I just appreciate your perspective, and I think you have a lot of wisdom in the whys, and sometimes I miss the whys.
I have not heard concerns about second step from a large number of parents. And we addressed the egregious issue of the external link. Um, and so, I always try to find a balance between what is a broad public topic and what is a topic that I can address with individual parents more effectively. And when I hear from a small handful of parents, and I know that schools are addressing issues as well, then it's probably not something that I'm going to bring forward. Um, but, and that's just generally. And tha- that's always a balance, because, um, I just think there's a different, a different forum that's better for, for different topics.
So how I would like, have liked you if I was in your shoes, address this, is we should have, when, when our, our social emotional learning people came here and they gave us those thirty-five bullet points, like, that was powerful. Like, I think the misconception among many is they think social emotional learning is second steps. When social emotional learning is a whole lot more, in fact, when the recent Davis district problems, I, I loved their solution by their board administration, cause it's everything that we just had done over the last three years, you know? And so what I would have much la- rather do is, I mean, it's, we could address their concern, but we also could address the misunderstanding out there of exactly what it is. Because I think when most people figure out what it really is, the broad picture of it, I think they, a- and we did a lot of this out of a crisis that, you know, we had, and so that's, that's something I would love to address, even if it's a link to another, another page.
To bring it back to this discussion, is that something you would like to see in a newsletter?
Yeah, correcting the miscon- misunderstandings out there is the whole purpose that I wanted the newsletter.
Well, and I, and I trust the boards', um, feel for what we need to put out in the community. I don't want to give disproportionate attention to certain topics. We can only have the public's attention for so long on a limited number of topics. And a nuanced message, which I think second step is, and a lot of other things that we do, is better one-on-one addressing concerns as they come forward, as opposed to characterizing something as being a widespread issue. Now, I also wanna clarify, it's not a, it's not a numbers game. Only one person has to tell me about an external link like the one that was in second step, and we're gonna take swift action and we're gonna make sure that things are addressed. Um, and I'm not done working with the parents who have raised those concerns and I've been very engaged with that, but I, I think it's an important balance, not everything that's important needs to be talked about in a board meeting. Not everything important needs to be sent out in, in an email or a flyer. What message are we trying to convey? Like I was talking about earlier, I could talk str- for a week straight about the things that are happening in this district. But there are limited messages that, that you can get across.
Please note, that was honestly coming from a place of, I want to understand. I, and that was only one example of an instance where I felt like I got a lot of community concern and didn't have a strong response, like, and maybe that was, I can see that that was an intentional decision, an intentional decision. On the part of the board, or the district, but.
And part of the strong response was we sent some very detailed emails to, to board members outlining responses to some of the concerns that had been raised to you. So, addressing each of those individual concerns, I think we were pretty uh, intentional about making sure we addressed everything that had been brought up. So, I, I think it's just a question of the forum. A- and, and taking something seriously doesn't always mean that it comes to a board meeting, I guess, is, is the way I would view that.
I would say as far as the newsletter goes, I mean, we're looking for things that, you know, have broad interest, particularly to people that aren't familiar with what's going on within the district, but I, I could see a place um, on a newsletter saying something like just highlighting that we have a district. Just highlighting that we have a district curriculum review committee. That parents are involved in, or, um. You know, a hotline, if people have concerns about curriculum, here's the hotline number. Kinda more broad stuff like that, rather than trying to address specific concerns in a newsletter.
Want to ever go in and, and get catty in, in the, in the weeds, but what I am saying is. Okay, social emotional learning is in the news, people care about it. Let's spotlight the good that our district is doing with.
Yeah.
Something that they're seeing out there. When they scroll Facebook, I'm seeing that on Facebook still. And within the small communities that I'm a part of, I'm seeing people who are concerned. And so I'm not saying, let's get into the weeds and like, fight. I'm just saying, can we do a positive spin that clarifies some of the good? That is happening in our district, so that the only message they're hearing is not from the other side.
But there, there could be, one of these could be, here's things our district are doing to promote. Health and wellness in our district and highlight a couple, couple bullet points.
That's exactly.
Or to address wellness or social emotional needs in our district.
Happening in special education in Jordan School District.
And, and that. Right, and I, I felt like that was exactly what we did in board meeting. Is that we had two extensive presentations on the social emotional learning that's happening. Which was intended to accomplish exactly what you just described. Give lots of good information and it's not a good spin, it's just good information about great things that are actually happening. So we did that back to back, providing really good information. And I, I, I feel like that's accomplishing what you've described, and I think that's exactly what we need to be doing.
I love that. I'm just worried about the people that aren't listening in.
So, can we put in here a link to that board, um, discussion?
Well. Again, it's a question about what we want to emphasize, because my understanding was. This was about how we had spent bond money and, and it was, it was a really, a focus on finances to some degree. The link to the Supercast is to make sure that they continue to get ongoing information about the district. And of course, anytime the board wants to set an agenda item around any issue. Controversial or otherwise, we're very happy to address that. The question about, you know, I ha- I have s- two limited time slots that I have during board meeting and I try to focus that on. Positive efforts, as you'll see in my recognitions, in my reports. That, that's something that I try to be very active in. Putting the positive out there is what the podcast is focused on. So I do think we put in a lot of efforts on putting the positive out there. This newsletter draft, I feel like at a certain point, we have to take some things out to put other things in. And there's a balance between addressing controversy and perpetuating controversy. And we always have to look for that. I, I never have anything to hide. I love having discussions, I love providing additional clarity. It's just, you don't have everyone's attention for very long, just like you said, what about the people who aren't listening? Well, they missed out on a couple of great presentations about social emotional learning in depth and two different angles of how we. How we do that, so. There, there are some, some folks that are very, very engaged and there are a lot of folks that are very engaged. It's, it's. I think we're trying to focus on how we reach those who may not naturally be engaged otherwise.
Question for this newsletter then, I, I think this is a good first newsletter. Um, does anyone want anything specific?
I, I do like this, um, newsletter, um. I really like this partnership with spec- Special Olympics Utah. I'm just wondering if there's any way that we could put some kind of a link that highlights some of the things that are, that have been done with this.
Which is part of our social emotional learning, that, that last story is.
Um, or, like, should I, cause I bet anything if I was to Google it, right, I would find out more information about this. I love the blurb, but I would love to hear. And, and I don't want, I'm not trying to make it complicated, I'm just trying to help educate parents on what this is.
I think what Jen's saying is whenever appropriate, put a link in there that we can go and get, find additional info.
Find additional information.
Cause I, I thought the same thing about the increased teacher pay.
But the thing is, is I also don't want them to have to create the content.
Exactly.
Like there's a link to the Majestic.
I see. A lease revenue bond and a bond both mentioned, and I'm like, I didn't know what the difference was. I wonder how many people do, so if they were interested, could they click the link to learn what it is?
And that would create, make your staff being able to create that content.
And they can Google that. They, they can Google.
Well, we need to, that's a whole different issue, cause we need to educate the public, I think, on. Um, how, how we're funded and the difference of some of those things. I think we need to do. Separate from this addition, we talked about this in finance. We, we, we've gotta explain to people, like, I've even had a mayor of a city call and say, how are schools funded exactly and. You know, and e- even amongst people who lead our community, um. We don't sometimes, like, I struggle sometimes understanding all the ins and outs of, of, um. Of how we fund education. I was one of the critics, like, I thought. We had the Taj Mahal schools, I thought administration was overpaid, I, I thought all these misconceptions, like, maybe that's why I'm. Such a fires under me to cr- correct these, because I bought into the lies. You know, I bought into the, the myths. And, and so I think that's a separate issue that then could be highlighted here, but we have to do that anyways.
Hey, the newsletter, people are just gonna scroll through and, you know, like this increased teacher pay, see it, but maybe next time around, we can have something about. Um.
Changes and.
Property taxes or how schools funded in a quick graphic and just, you know, little blips is what people get.
Short and sweet.
I, I like this.
Said, sorry.
Okay, any changes to this one?
Like I said, if appropriate, if you have somewhere to point it with a link, point it with a link, but if you don't, don't create anything new.
Well, we have, we have done that with.
Unified.
Yeah.
A few of these, so if there's somewhere where you would like us to create additional content. Or if you want us to trade out one of these topics for another, or if you'd like us to make this longer.
This is a perfect first.
We can do whatever else you want us to do. Um, this is trying to give a broad view, but hit those. Hit the main points.
The first, a, a perfect first start. I just think that there's just gonna be a lot of content to share in the future. And we'll just have to be mindful of how we share that. But this, and, yeah, I know that you will be mindful about that, so.
Okay, everyone okay with this one, this time around?
This is awesome direction.
Thank you.
Love that you highlighted the learning academies, I've, I love that you've, there's just a lot of, there's a lot highlighted in this little bit.
So, and then my, a, a question that I have and you want to answer it now, but at some point we should answer it. Do you have enough staff to do this? Is this increasing? You're pretty thin over there already and does the board need to address this and making sure you have the staff necessary to put, pull this off? It is quarterly, so it's not every month or something, but.
You have enough staff to put this together.
Um, and, anything else on?
Can you tell me again which methods of communication, just a final summary of the methods of communication?
So, we're sending out the newsletter and then sending out a prompt for people to sign up for future newsletters. To all the emails that we have in the district. On the journals and social media.
No postcards, no additional emails.
Not at this time.
Great. And we'll send this out, plus a chance to sign up for future, uh, for future newsletters. Now, the interesting part about that is if we email everyone and then we ask them to sign up. Then that means we're only sending it to the people who sign up after that, I'm guessing. Because you would assume that if I don't sign up for the next one, then I'm not gonna have to keep getting these. Who else was at the graduation where students said, we're not gonna receive any more emails from Jordan School District? And everyone cheered? That was West Jordan, yeah.
That was West Jordan.
Yeah, I do.
And now they will.
Yep. Okay. Okay.
Th- this is great, I'm really happy with this newsletter. Um, and then also just, if you wanna pass along to the communications department, they've really done a tremendous job. We've had some. Tough issues lately and I've just been very pleased.
Thank you.
The job they're doing.
They, they do an incredible job of managing.
Mm-hmm.
A lot behind the scenes.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, that is the end of our study session. We do need to go into closed session. Um, so, thank you everyone for listening. And hope everyone has a good holiday season. I will take a motion to go into, there's only, there's only six people watching right now. But to those six.
They're watching the snow instead. Is it snowing?
Okay, okay, to the two people watching.
Thanks for staying to the end.
Thanks for staying with us. Um, I need a motion to go into closed session for character incompetence of individuals, property potential litigation and negotiations.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session for character incompetence of individuals, property, potential litigation and negotiations.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Ms. Atwood, second by Mr. Robinson, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, anyone opposed? Okay.